Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the special town meeting for the town of Easton. I have the town moderator Kate Welch. Up here on stage with me is the town clerk Danielle Saccard. And next to you is town councilwoman Kate Fedor. Before we begin tonight, I just want to take a minute to recognize some students at Olive Range High School. We never really got the opportunity to recognize students, but I think that it's really important, especially this school year, as it continues to bring challenges for all of our kids, all of our students. And while they're adjusting to a new normal, several groups within the school have really gone above and beyond, and I think that they deserve some recognition. So first, I would just like to say congratulations to Olive Range's marching band, who has won the Division Four championships this season, this fall. Huge, huge accolades to them. They were extremely excited, got a great welcoming when they got back here to Olive Range from Darkness, I believe is where they won that championship. And then besides them, all of our sports teams, which make up about 400 students within Olive Range this fall, all of our fall sports teams with the exception of football, have made it to the MIAA tournament. So that means that the boys soccer team won the Davenport, which is part of the Hockmaw League, and then they also won the Hawk, which is in the entire league. Both boys and girls cross country teams went undefeated in the Hockmaw League, winning the Davenport Division and finishing first in the Hockmaw League. The girls soccer finished the regular season capturing the Davenport Division Championship and qualifying also for the MIAA state tournament. And the field hockey team also went on to MIAA state tournament. The field hockey team and all of those teams have won their first game for MIAA, which is huge for all of us. And volleyball as well. Volleyball, the girls did really well, and they also have won their first round. And the field hockey team is playing right now up in, and I'm going to butcher the name, in Danvers, but they're playing against Monoskmet, which I believe that's how you pronounce it. It's a regional school up in Tooksberry, or Topsfield rather, Topsfield. They're playing right now their second game for the MIAA. So I just wanted to, you know, take care of that, because we never seem to speak of the children and how they've really been resilient through all this and they're doing fabulous. So getting down to business tonight, as everybody knows, if you registered, we have 100 registered voters in the house. You are given a little orange card, your little registered voter card that everybody has, just like this. So it gets time to actually take out those cards and vote, and you should hold out that sign so that we can see them, because the old idea of the word difficulty is for maybe even see more in the sky. So, and same thing when we vote yes and when we vote no, just need to have you hold those up. There is an area down here too, in my right and your left, for non-registered voters, so anybody who wants to come and just watch for fun, because this is so much fun. To just watch for fun, you can sit down here and watch. And right in front of us on the floor are the board of selectmen. And over to my left, your right, is the finance committee. The school committee also involved, okay? So we have a quorum. The clerk has confirmed that the return of the warrant is in order, and we can start the meeting. I'm just going to ask everybody to rise and be the question. Thank you. So today is November 8, 2021, and it's now 4:43. And the special town meeting for the town of Easton is now called to order. Article one.
I move that the town vote to appropriate by transfer from free cash the sum of $1,175,000 to be placed into the stabilization fund.
Second.
By way of explanation, this article moves $1,175,000 of available free cash to the stabilization fund in accordance with the town's financial management guidelines and the honorable to build up reserves. Once transferred, the balance of the stabilization fund will be, and I'm going to give you an asterisk here, the number that I'm going to read you is different than what is in the warrant because of interest that had changed since the warrant was printed. So the new number is $4,737,792. And that matches the number that you'll see in the backup table.
Select and wait.
Do the second. Select and recommend.
And finance committee.
Finance committee recommends.
Any comments, questions, or concerns relative to Article one? Okay, seeing none. All of those in favor of Article one passing, please raise your orange card. This is a simple majority vote. All of those opposed, please raise your orange card. And Article one passes by majority. Article two, select and recommend.
I move that the town vote to appropriate by transfer from available Medicaid cost recovery funds the sum of $117,283 to be placed into the capital stabilization fund.
Second.
By way of explanation, this article moves available one-time revenues to the capital stabilization fund for future use subject to timing appropriation. Once transferred, the balance of the capital stabilization fund will be, again, this number is a little bit different than what's printed in the warrant, Select and recommend.
Finance committee.
Finance committee recommends.
Any questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article number two? Article two requires a simple majority vote. All of those in favor, please raise your orange cards. And all of those opposed, please raise your orange cards. And Article two passes by majority. Article three, select and recommend.
I move that the town vote to appropriate a transfer from free cash the sum of $200,000 to be placed into the special education reserve fund.
Second.
By way of explanation, the special education reserve fund was established to set aside funds for future unanticipated or unbudgeted costs related to special education costs. The requested appropriation will be funds previously transferred out of the reserve fund at the June 22, 2020 annual town meeting. Select and recommend.
Finance committee.
Finance committee recommends.
Any questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article number three? Okay, seeing none. Article three requires a simple majority vote. All of those in favor, please raise your orange card. And all of those opposed, please raise your orange card. Okay, and Article three passes by majority. Article four.
I move that the town vote to accept provisions of the fourth paragraph of the Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Section 111F, and establish a special injury leave and debt fund and to appropriate a transfer from free cash the sum of $100,000 to be placed into said fund.
Second.
By way of explanation, the town self-insured or injured on duty medical coverage, however, payroll costs associated with long-term injury access for police and firefighters are typically borne on existing payroll budgets for those departments. The amount of overtime necessitated for shift coverage resulting from injuring the line of duty varies widely, and it is not an expense that can reasonably be anticipated and budgeted for during the routine budget cycle. And so the special reserve fund would provide flexibility for those departments to adequately fund injury-driven overtime. Funds placed in this account will be under the care of the select board and can only be discharged for IOD-related costs following a vote of the board at its public meeting. Select and recommend.
Finance committee.
Finance committee recommends.
Any questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article four? Okay, seeing none. Article four requires a simple majority. All of those in favor, please raise your orange card. And all of those opposed, please raise your orange card. Okay, Article four passes by majority. Article five. Select and recommend.
I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum $7,740 by transfer from water surplus to pay the cost of bills incurred for the prior fiscal year.
Second.
By way of explanation, this prior year bill is for the replacement of a P-class containing firefighting foam, which was funded by the water division as part of the targets P-class mitigation program. Select and recommend.
Finance committee.
Finance committee recommends. We also recommend.
Any questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article number five? Okay, Article number five requires a nine-tenth vote. All of those in favor, please raise your orange card. And all of those opposed. And Article five passes by majority. Article number six.
I move that the town vote to amend fiscal year 2022 departmental budgets, including cost items for collective bargaining agreements by the following amounts, which shall increase said budgets unless otherwise noted. Assessors $18,100, fire and rescue $64,176, regional and county school assessments $65,739, maturing debt and interest decrease of $729,67, water enterprise $18,525 for a net decrease of $562,527. And to meet these amendments, the amount raised from taxation shall be decreased by $653,572. $8,324 shall be transferred from the subject government's receipts reserved for appropriation. $64,176 shall be transferred from fiscal year 2022 employee benefits and insurance budget. And $18,525 shall be transferred from water receipts.
Second.
By way of explanation, this article will adjust fiscal year 2022 operating budget including revenues and expenditures. Adjustments for the assessing cover, for the assessing cover staffing transfers and training requirements, fire department adjustment primarily funds, a collective bargaining agreement reached since the annual town meeting, and is funded by existing collective bargaining reserves. Regional and county school assessments increased mainly due to a change in the application of grant funds and net school spending requirements outside of town's control. Maturing debt and interest will decrease mostly due, mostly due to a reduction in the amount of exempt debt to be raised on school projects. And the water enterprise fund requires an adjustment for additional debt service. Select and recommend.
Finance committee.
Finance committee recommends.
Any questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article number six? Okay, seeing none. Article six requires a simple majority vote. All of those in favor, please raise your orange card. And all of those opposed, please raise your card. And Article six passes by majority. Article seven, select and recommend.
I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $1,316,696 to supplement capital needs of the town fiscal year 2022. As printed in the warrant, under Article seven, and as needs appropriation, $1,100,000 shall be transferred from free cash. And $216,696 shall be transferred from overland surplus.
Second.
By way of explanation, this article will address additional capital needs for fiscal year 2022 that were not able to be granted by the annual town meeting. The town administrator in our department has, will make a brief presentation on the fire, police, DPW facility feasibility component of the budget. Select and recommend.
Finance committee.
Finance committee recommends.
Good evening, and thank you all for being here. So a key component of tonight's capital life supplement for fall is the fire, police, and DPW facilities replacement feasibility funding. I'm going to provide a brief presentation to cover what that study is, and why it's necessary to move this forward at this time, and what it would mean for our public. So first, what is this feasibility phase funding? This funding will be for owner's project management services and designer services for building replacement and consolidation and site feasibility study, primarily focused on DPW on Center Street, water on Bay Road, and police and fire on Lows Road Street. In short, feasibility phase will determine which buildings need to be replaced, which can be combined onto a shared campus, where those future buildings and campuses should be located, what impacts and services can be anticipated from that project, and of course, a important question of how much will this cost? So for those who haven't been in these facilities, what condition are they currently in? The DPW, police, and fire facilities have been have ranged from 50 to 170 years old. They are too small, they are in poor state to repair and are not to provide accessibility, health, safety, and environmental codes. There's woefully insufficient storage space. Public safety here are members are stored in hallways. Equipment rests on office roofs and other non-glove-tested areas. The vast majority of the DPW's eight-and-a-half-million-dollar vehicle fleet is not garaged and is exposed to elements year-round increasing annual maintenance costs and increasing the frequency with which I can come before you would ask to replace them. And personnel are generally in spaces that are too small, that were designed to fit fewer than half as many folks when they were designed a half century ago. Simply because the buildings are past their useful lives, they're not complying to modern regulations, and continued annual capital spending on municipal building repairs is not a sound financial investment as they will ultimately need to be replaced. So why now? Feasibility is the first formal step in assuring the appropriate replacement options in a proactive and responsible manner, rather than continuing reactive and urgency repairs as these buildings further age. As a practical matter, these projects can take many, many years to move from feasibility to design, bidding, and construction and beginning. The longer that we wait to start this first formal step of feasibility, the more likely the warrant to continue to be expanded upon repairs for these facilities which ultimately will need to be replaced. So while feasibility would be the first formal step in this building project, it's not the first time that we've put our heads together and worked on this. Feasibility would follow years of planning, going back at least to 2014. There's the dorm building municipal facilities assessment, which quantified hundreds of millions of dollars' worth of repair and replacement needs for our town's new buildings. That study was one of many contributing factors that led to the currently underway project to replace Park Room, World Hall, and Center School. In 2019, the Municipal Building Committee, which is a committee of citizens tasked with assisting with municipal building projects, working with the DPW director, they feel updated those figures and sought a recommendation report, which at that time in 2019, recommended replacement of most of the town's municipal facilities. In 2020, feasibility funding was first requested in the capital planning process to get this project moving, but it was deferred at that time due to a lack of funds and lack of economic certainty there in COVID. This summer, the select board adopted goals for this fiscal year identifying the advancement of funding and other planning strategies for these facilities for the town, which leads to the meeting here tonight. Leading up to tonight's town meeting, numerous boards and committees of citizens have reviewed this request and unanimously voted to support it, and includes capital planning for finance committee, select board, and the municipal building committee. And so if this is approved tonight, where do we go? Feasibility can take anywhere from one to two years. That timetable is highly contingent on the scope of what you're looking at, what types of buildings you want consolidated where. For a frame of reference, the elementary school project that's currently under construction had its feasibility phase funded in November of 2017. It took until October of 2019 for detailed design and construction funding to be before town meeting, with an associated debt exclusion under November, and construction broke around in 2021. A key component of feasibility for municipal facilities replacement, just like with the school project, will be public engagement, feedback, hearing from folks in the community, opening these buildings up for tours, and having regular updates on their process. This would be done publicly through the municipal building committee and by their website. At the conclusion of the feasibility phase, the town would have recommended project and design, which would give us the information we need for our construction budget, at which point you need to come back to you voters for town meeting incorporation and an associated debt exclusion if the project is only moved any further. So, thank you. Thank you for coming tonight, and thank you for consideration of this important priority for our citizens.
Any questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article seven? If you, I didn't have to say this at the beginning, but if you have a question, there are microphones right at the middle walkway here. So please come to my microphone, introduce yourself, and please tell us what your emphasis is as well, because we're recording everything for the minutes.
My name is William Van La Hoven. I live at 319 Foundry Street in Southeastern. My question is, we did a feasibility study in 2014, is that correct?
In 2014, that was a facilities need study, so that looked more at the square footage and what it would cost to repair those structures and bring them up to a moderate code using the existing code.
Okay, and that was $339 million at the time?
$339 million was the replacement cost, I believe, of school and town buildings. Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
So is it the, are we talking about the money now? Are we talking about the facilities themselves, or what are we really discussing here?
So what we are discussing, this would be funding for a feasibility phase, which would bring an owner's management team together, and engineers and architects, design professionals, to work with the town to look specifically at public works on Center Street, water on Bay Road, and police and fire stations on Lows Road Street, and not just take a square foot analysis and say, okay, you have this much square feet today. Public buildings are X dollar per square foot, you need that much. But to look at it from a lower comprehensive perspective of what do you actually need, not just to come up to code compliance, but to have structures that are appropriate size to fit the number of personnel we currently have, and the equipment that you own. That then snowballs into the question of, okay, where are we putting it? Because none of the current sites are big enough to expand. So it would be looking at the operational needs and what that translates into as far as building around those operations, and there's going to be kind of a real estate analysis proportion of this component, excuse me, of this, to look at where does it make sense for these sites to be located, so that they serve the needs of the department and the public.
What was the cost of the feasibility study that we already performed back in 2014? We already did a feasibility study, right? How much was that?
That was a facilities needs assessment. That wasn't a feasibility study. I don't have any sort of perfect cost off here.
Okay, so we didn't do anything with that feasibility study, is that correct?
No, it is not correct. That study was integral to town, and invited into the Massachusetts School Building Authority's replacement process, which led to us getting $130 million in grants to the state to build the new school that's currently under construction.
Okay, so all we're really approving today is to go forward with the feasibility study, we're not approving the construction of this, is that correct?
Correct. We would need to, at the conclusion of feasibility, come back and present the pitch basically, if this is what we think makes sense for our construction project, and get voted.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Suzanne Bump, 6 Ho Shop Street. Could you just identify how it is that you came to the conclusion that this particular amount of money was needed? Is this an estimate based on other feasibility studies? Or have you engaged already in a bidding process to arrive at this amount? Thank you.
Thank you. That's a good question. So no, we have not done requests or proposals yet. We are, we are finished with that, and we got thrown a little bit by some poweraus recently. We took $500,000, basically because that was in the neighborhood of between where Mansfield's feasibility was, which was roughly $325,000. They did a semi-similar building, although there wasn't as much real estate consolidation. And then the school feasibility, which we appropriated, wasn't included. So this is, I know that's not a highly scientific answer, but we feel it's enough to get us going in a meaningful direction. And there are developments early now that have executed NLUs with the select board that would contribute more funding towards this. If they end up being affirmative, that would hopefully be possible later.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article seven? Okay, Article seven needs a simple majority vote. All of those in favor, please raise your orange card. And all of those opposed, please raise your orange card. And Article seven passes by majority. Article eight.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $18,580 to pay the cost of cumulative vacation that we acquired to be paid by the fire department.
Second.
By way of explanation, the fire department has a retirement forthcoming for employee eligible for vacations and grandfather-in-law's years, but the law is no longer existing sickly by act upon retirement. What for recommends?
Finance committee.
Finance committee recommends.
Any questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article eight? Seeing that Article eight requires a simple majority vote. All of those in favor, please raise your orange card. And all of those opposed, please raise your orange card. And Article eight passes by majority. Article nine, select and recommend.
I move that the town vote to appoint Henry J. Ames and Kevin M. Kidd as trustees to the Ames Trust Funds for the Town of Easton Highway Permanent Fund and Supporter School Fund, as described in the warrant.
Second.
By way of explanation, James S. Thomas, appointed a trustee by vote of town meeting on April 29, 1991, has resigned as trustee, and this article would fill that vacancy and add a third trustee to care for and manage the funds along with continuing trustee David James Jr. Excuse, David Ames Jr.
Select and recommend.
Select and recommend.
Finance committee.
Finance committee recommends.
Any questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article one? This requires a simple majority vote. All of those in favor, please raise your orange card. And all of those opposed, please raise your orange card. And Article nine passes by majority. Article ten.
I move that the town vote to rescind $230,000 of the borrowing authorized under Article 17 of the May 18, 2015 annual town meeting, as printed in the warrant under Article 10.
Second.
By way of explanation, this housekeeping article will remove the remaining authorization that would otherwise remain under books due to that having.
Select and recommend. Finance committee.
Finance committee recommends.
Any questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article 10? Article 10 requires a simple majority vote. All of those in favor, please raise your orange card. And all of those opposed, please raise your orange card. And Article 10 passes by majority. Article 11, select and recommend.
I move that the town vote to authorize the select board to grant easement for the installation of underground electrical utilities in a property known and numbered as 50 Spooner Street, and to further authorize the select board to take any and all action necessary to effectuate this easement.
Second.
By way of explanation, this easement has been requested by National Grid for installation of underground electrical service to the future H.A. Ames Elementary School, which is currently under construction. The property in question is town-owned, and the easement is necessary to provide utilities to the building. A plan depicting the easement is not filed with the select board's office. The select board recommends.
Finance committee.
Finance committee recommends.
Any questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article 11? Seeing that Article 11 requires a two-thirds majority, all of those in favor, please raise your orange card. And all of those opposed. And Article 11 passes by a simple majority. Article 12.
I move that $1 million be appropriated for purpose of financing of all water pollution of vacant facility projects, repair, replacement, and/or upgrade of separate systems pursuant to agreements with the board of health and residential property owners, including without limitation all costs thereof as defined in Section 1 of Chapter 29(c) of the general laws, that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the select board is authorized to borrow $1 million and issue bonds or notes. Therefore, under General Law, Chapter 111, Section 127b and 1/2, and/or Chapter 29(c) of the general laws, that project and financing costs shall be repaid by the property owners in accordance with those agreements, but such bonds or notes shall be general obligations of the town. That the treasurer with the approval of the select board is authorized to borrow all or a portion of such amounts from the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust, established pursuant to Chapter 29(c), and in connection therewith to enter into a loan agreement and/or security agreement with the trust and otherwise contract with the trust and the Department of Environmental Protection with respect to such loan, and for any federal or state aid available for the project or for the financing thereof, and that the select board or other of our local or for the financing thereof, and that the Select Board or other appropriate local body or official is authorized to enter into a project regulatory agreement with the Department of Environmental Protection to expand all funds available for the projects and to take any other action necessary to carry out the projects.
Second.
By way of explanation, if approved, this will allow the town to avail itself of additional funds available through the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust at low interest, which will then be used to provide loans to residents for the express purpose of upgrading failed subject systems. Operating includes the replacement of an existing system or the connecting to a sewer. The funds will be offered as benefitment loans, which will be paid back with interest over a period of time, not to exceed twenty years. Benefits appear as additional charges on the real estate tax bill. Since two thousand and twelve, the town has provided three point four million dollars in loans operating more than one hundred and forty systems to date. The approval of these additional funds will allow the continuation of this program.
Select or not recommends. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends.
Any questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article twelve? Article twelve needs a two-thirds majority. All those in favor of Article twelve, please raise your orange card. And all those opposed. And Article twelve passes by two-thirds majority. That's all the articles that we have, ladies and gentlemen. I just need someone to do the motion.
Second.
Thank you, and I will be with you then. Thank you.